Good evening.
I want to welcome everybody to the October 15th Board of Commissioners meeting. The thought of the day, effective people are not problem minded, they're opportunity minded. They feed opportunities and starve problems. That's from Stephen Curve. Our invocation tonight will be by Ms. Latonya Hump followed by a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Henderson.
May we bow our heads. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we just thank you, Lord God, for allowing us to come before you once more and again, Lord God. We invite your presence into this board meeting, Lord God. We just ask that you have moved forward, Lord God, as you have ordained for this board meeting to go, Lord God. We just ask that you cover our communities, Lord God. We just ask that you be with us as we make decisions for the betterment of the community, Lord God. We just ask that you bless every single person in attendance, bless their extended families, Lord God. We just ask that you enlarge our territory, Lord God, and allow us to be a light for you, Lord God. We just ask again that you come into this meeting. We just ask that you touch each commissioner that represents every community in Newton County. Bless our county manager, bless our chairman, Lord God, our county clerk's office, Lord God, everyone represented in their ordained place, Lord God. We thank you for every little blessing, Lord God. We thank you for every opportunity that you have afforded us, Lord God. And we just ask that your spirit open our minds, our hearts, and our ears, Lord God, to hear what is necessary for the citizens of Newton County. We ask all of these blessings in your darling son, Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Thank you. Item number four is the adoption of the agenda. We got a motion, do I have a second? A motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passes for zero. Item number five, citizen comments. Agenda topics only, you have three minutes to address the board. Name and address, please, please step forward.
Good evening. Dave Norton of Newbern, 4357, Highway 142. Appointments and updates are listed in tonight's agenda for the Industrial Development Authority and the Joint Development Authority. In this county, we have an Industrial Development Authority, a Joint Development Authority, a Downtown Covington Development Authority, a 278 corridor authority, and maybe a few other I don't know about. Let me add that these agencies are supported by this BOC, the Chamber of Commerce, City Council of Covington, Oxford, Porter Dale, Mansfield, Newbern. Well, the blood will be on your hands. Per last night's one water meeting, the population of Newton County will grow by 60,000. That's a six followed by four zeros. 60,000 in 25 years. Why? Because these aforementioned agencies in tonight's agenda invited them here. I do not know why they do what they do. Maybe some kind of fame and fortune do they seek, hoping to have a building or a street named after them. One of tonight's speakers mentioned in a recent podcast about transparency within their agency all the while signing non-disclosure agreements. What is wrong with that picture? Also at last night's meeting, it was stated population will almost double by the time today's teenagers reach retirement. Why? Because once again, that is what the aforementioned agencies desire. They desire an overcrowded, congested, crime-ridden cesspool known as LA of the South. Is this the legacy we want to leave our grandchildren? Newton has been known as a bedroom community of Atlanta, and it will survive as such, being within an hour commute. But that is not what they want. Growth would only be a minor fraction of this if it were not for their efforts. People would move to Newton because it is a safe, quiet place to live, as they have for the past 20 and 30 years. So as you hear these updates and make these appointments, ask yourself why? Is this truly what the citizens of Newton County want? There is 100-plus thousand citizens not here tonight that are not affiliated with the Newton County government. Why are they not here? Because a lot believe they cannot make a difference. Because you, the government, will do what you want regardless. That we're the government, and we know what's best for you, like it or not. Especially when members of the government speak to citizens in a condescending manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Agenda topics only.
Jeff Bishop, 10144, Twin Oaks Drive, Southwest Covington. I too want to speak on the issue of the Joint Development Authority. And I am not a resident of Rutledge. I do own some property in eastern Newton County. I live on the western part of the county right now. I am not part of the No-Two Rivian group. But a question comes to my mind, and that is, where is the accountability for the Joint Development Authority? It seems to me that these authorities keep popping up and are created, and the members of those authorities have almost unlimited power. And there's no direct accountability to the voters and the taxpayers. And it really bothers me how the citizens of Rutledge were treated over this Rivian project. I think they had every right to voice objections and complaints about the changes that were coming to their communities, to their properties. They were trying to protect their homes and their families. And instead, they were kicked around, and they were walked on by the Joint Development Authority and by other members of the state, and I think that was very wrong. I think there should be a group of stakeholders comprised of citizens that live in the area where these projects are going to take place. These stakeholders should have some level of final say over what happens. And speaking of that, this related to the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan seems to be predicated upon the coming of Rivian and all the development that is supposed to take place in that part of the county. And I've seen projections of a light industrial and heavy commercial being extended all the way to Newbern. I don't want that. I don't think the citizens of this county want that. And I just think about the traffic that will come from that. The high insurance rates that happen because of all the accidents. And the loss of everything that is familiar. I grew up here, and it bothers me to see what this county is becoming. I don't want it to be like Gwinnett County. I don't want it to be like Henry County or some of the other surrounding counties. It looks to me that when these projects go forward, it might make money for a few people, people who may not even live in this state. But most of us suffer and pay a heavy price for this kind of thing. So I hope that these things will be considered as we think about this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Kim Young, Crowell Road. I just have three little questions or comments or whatever. Number seven on the report from the county manager, maybe in this, when he speaks. But a question about the bridge, on Brown Bridge. What's happening with it? Nobody has set foot on it in, I know, about eight or nine weeks. So I'm just curious what it's, you know, where's it going? And then I guess, in reference to the old business on the agenda, the Brown Bridge development. I know it was tabled for 60 days back in March for a traffic study. Nobody has ever answered my question, how do they do traffic studies? I come and go on that road every day. They used to put a monitor across the road, and you drove over it so they count the traffic. That's never been done. How do they count traffic? That's my question. And the last one, in reference to the appeal for the 4271 Salem Road. When it went before planning, we were talking about a speaker variance. We weren't talking about not even allowing the business to be there. The commercial, it's general commercial, so a fast food restaurant could be there. If it were like Chick-fil-A with no speaker, we wouldn't be having this conversation. If it had a touchscreen for ordering, we wouldn't be having this conversation. The fact that the car wash next door doesn't have a speaker, but when it stops, a loud buzzer goes off. That doesn't seem to be an issue since it butts up to the property that we're having to do the variance for. I heard several complaints against it, the traffic was going to get worse. Traffic's not going to get worse because of a Burger King on Salem Road. There was no turn lane. There is a turn lane. Some people wanted healthier food. You know, I think the precedence for what is there was already decided when you have the Wendy's and the Chick-fil-A and the McDonald's and the Taco Bell. And I hope when you look at this, again, it was for a speaker. It wasn't for the fact that the building can't be there. We're just asking for a speaker, you know, the variance to be shortened. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Agenda topics only.
Good evening. Maya Allen, District Three, resident. I wanted to pose the question regarding 9C and the cancellation of regular board meetings for November and December, specifically to issues that have not been addressed as of yet. I'm sure we have plenty of business, and I'm not really understanding why these meetings are to be canceled specifically for the West Side Community Center. We're looking for progress on it. And I feel that if we have these meetings, we should be able to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? That ends our portion of citizen comments. We're going to move into item number six, which is Chairman's report. I want to ask Sarah Hall, yep, she's here, Sarah Hall to come up and give us an update from the JDA. Thank you.
Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to first and go ahead and say, unfortunately, I was on the agenda for the last meeting that was canceled. And so I bring you some news that I think has already been reported out in the paper, but it's certainly worth celebrating and stating again. The Joint Development Authority, you probably saw it in the paper, but has received and really fine-tuned their budget to realize that there was $2 million that was not needed for their budget for potential earmarked projects of infrastructure work or other land development or other promised projects. And so they have now returned that money back to the counties that was previously unbudgeted. I think you all are aware of this, but the funds that come in as tax collection comes into the JDA first, and then they're able to budget for their needs, if there are any. And if not, then they make the choice and then return it back to the county. So this was a great surprise. That $2 million, then Newton County's portion, was approximately $750,000 that again, has come in now to be of use. I think that one of the things that's also worth stating is that this year in tax collection alone from the three park agencies was a little over $7 million. And all of that money in totality was returned back to the counties. None was kept as operation or progress, but again, back to the taxpayers of the four counties as intended. I'm sure Commissioner Henderson would love to hear this, because you were here at the time when the JDA was created. The original investment of the JDA, when it began, was approximately $10.4 million by the four counties putting in together. Year-to-date, the money that it's generated back is a little over $40 million. And so that's a net return of over $30 million that has all been generated back to our counties since inception, and now with three park tenants there. So again, bringing good financial news, wanted to share that with you. And again, I know we've seen some of this in the paper, but again, it's a positive and something that we've really realized since then. Along with that, the three park tenants are doing well, again, whether it's retention with Takeda and their employee mix, Meta continuing in their progress of construction on the second plant, but then also Rivian that is doing stabilization management as well as underground construction management of their site where they're paused vertically for construction. The frontage road is complete and open, and again, that was a part of their budgeting aspect here. And then also, community advocacy. I think many of you know that the community action grants for Meta are out at this moment. Takeda has been a large partnership of our community projects. And then Rivian has an upcoming 5K that will benefit Camp Twin Lakes that many of our four counties use, and that will happen at the end of November. So happy to take any questions. Again, thank you for the time. Just wanted to share, again, I don't think we can ever talk about why it's a good thing that funds are coming back to our county, and so especially those that were unaccounted for at the moment.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. We got a question from Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And you're absolutely 100% right. We questioned a long time ago, and just let me say this, I'm glad to see you here this evening. So the money that came back to the county, and I guess, so how does that help our taxes here in Newton County? And just give a little brief, I guess, update of what I'm talking about. Is that the main reason for us working hard was to hopefully get commercial, more commercial into Newton County, was to relieve some of the taxes that we have, you know, like home taxes or whatever. And that some of that money would come in, and so that our taxes, it's still my thinking back then, and it's still my thinking now, that it would go down. So I guess this is to our county manager as well. So the money that we have received, how does that offset some of the taxes, or does it?
We have yet to assess where that funding will be allocated at this time, but I can provide you all with a report during the next meeting.
And thank you. It is my hope that, you know, and I've always been a little skeptical of a rollback, because I've always said that the rollback still increases people's taxes. It is my hope that we can do something to relieve some of the taxes, especially for our seniors who've been struggling with all this school tax, and most of them don't even have kids in school. And that somehow that we can reimburse them, or if there's anything that we can reimburse, to help them out at this particular time in their life. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Thank you so much.
Next, I want to call up Wendy Patterson, Director of Newton County Emergency Management Authority. I'd like for her to give us an update over, I guess, the last few weeks. We've had a hurricane, we've had a chemical fire.
Right.
And just wanted her to update the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I would like to start with Hurricane Helene. Just a brief overview of this event for the county. On September 23rd, we began to receive notice from the National Weather Service of high probability of Hurricane Helene affecting our area. On September 24th, Governor Kemp signed a state of emergency for this event. So Newton County began communicating with our county leaders, county department leaders, as well as our municipalities to come together, attend scheduled weather webinars, and establish a collaborative response effort. Based on the predicted weather for our area, EMA requested through the Red Cross that an evacuation shelter be established for those citizens that needed a safe place to stay during the duration of the storm. That shelter opened on September 26th. Public Works, Newton County Fire, Animal Services, and our Facilities Departments assisted EMA with these logistical needs for the shelter. The Emergency Operations Center also opened on the 26th, where crucial emergency support functions from both county municipality levels came together, and they remained through the duration of the event. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cooper, Commissioner Edwards, for your support, stopping by the EOC, making sure everyone was taken care of. The storm took a more of an easterly path than was originally stated, which lessened the predicted impacts for our area. However, some residents did experience some extensive damages to their homes, which led to Newton County receiving a declaration for federal individual disaster assistance. Both the EOC and the shelter closed on September 27th. Let's see, that's it for Hurricane Helene. Moving on to BioLab, two days later, that closed on the 27th. On the 29th, Rockdale County EMA reached out to me to see if we could provide some assistance to them by way of a shelter needed for their residents located in that immediate evacuation zone around the BioLab site. We were able to help them with this request and open a shelter at Burt Adams Scout Camp. The Red Cross, Public Health, and Rockdale EMA provided staffing for the shelter, while Newton EMA, Public Works assisted with some logistical needs. The Newton County Sheriff's Office provided round-the-clock security for that site as well. Through the duration of the event, the Sheriff's Office provided a station liaison at the Rockdale County Emergency Operations Center. Newton County Fire Services provided multiple units and personnel to aid Rockdale County as well. Newton County Animal Services coordinated with Rockdale in moving their sheltered animals to Walton County. Leadership from the county municipalities, Chamber of Commerce, the school system, Water Authority, the state Joint Development Authority, and others gathered to discuss their concerns in a collaborative response with the safety of our citizens as top priority. The EPD and EPA monitored air quality related to the fire. Monitors were positioned around the plant where the strongest concentration of chemicals were prevalent. Any readings beyond these monitors into other counties, including Newton, would not have registered at any higher risk than identified at those stations. So BioLab has now published a website for community support resources for anyone that has been affected, experiencing continual effects. And I can provide that website for you. It's just BioLabConyersResponse.com for anyone that may need that. And again, EMA would like to thank Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cooper, all of you for the constant support during these back-to-back events. Thank you.
Ms. Wendy, thank you. And first, I want to thank EMA, GIS, Public Works, Office of Sheriff, Fire Services, and I'm probably missing somebody. But it was a long week, and just watching you guys, I guess, I hate to say that's your Super Bowl of the year, but that's, you know, having back-to-back events, and the way you guys handled yourselves and the way we were able to help our neighboring counties was amazing. So thank you, guys. Questions, Mr. Henderson?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. A question that I have that I think Hurricane Helene, I went on to the RAC's gym, and that's what I do in District Four, is that when there's somewhat of a disaster, things happen, I go and see for myself. And the Red Cross personnel that was in there was very nice. And I'm sure they knew who I was, and I had a pair of jeans, and I hadn't shaved in two days because I was worried about my family. But yeah, I want to take out time to think about our community and as far as our response and for the people. I was told there was about nine people at RAC's gym who may have spent the night, and may have been, somebody can correct me if they were wrong, that it was, I don't think it was nobody, but maybe one person that I seen that I knew that was headed back over to the shelter that may have been from Newton County, which it doesn't matter. We really just wanted to help someone. But I observed when I went in, was talking to the Red Cross personnel, was that there was seen to be a leak on the hardwood floor, especially in the front. And so I would like, if you could, Mr. Cooper, have somebody to check it out and make sure that it's not leaking in the gym. And I've heard that it was leaking at some place somewhere, but it looked like it was water all over the front part of the floor. And I thought for nine people, my thinking that there weren't enough people to have that amount of water on the floor. Secondly, it was the chemical leak, smoke, and current. It affected, I know me and my house, and I think we closed down the county. I think if I'm right, Mr. Chairman, it was two days. Two days, and I thankful to be closed down in two days. People were concerned. I know my eyes were itching, and my throat was sore and stuff like that. And I think they told us staying a couple days, two or three days. And I would like to encourage anybody that was affected by it, please call their call center, whomever you may need to talk with, and see if there's anything that really hurt you or the fumes. Because when you get a certain age, you have underlying issues, and it affects you more than it would a younger person. So we hope we can look at that, and everybody who's been affected can make sure that people know, and maybe, just maybe, someone may get some type of conversation for that. I know the last one, they did. And so we're hoping it'll be the same at this time. And lastly, as you said, Chairman, our personnel, Mr. Cooper, well, I mean, we'd have stood up and just worked throughout the county road department, and all the departments, Office of Sheriff, just worked trying to make it safer and put their own lives at risk to make sure that we were protected during the storm. Thank you.
Thank you. District Three, you had a question?
Well, I guess it would be a question, has there been any information provided to you as the long-term effect of what the plume may have caused? Because you know, my district is really close to the borderline. I've had many constituents actually reach out to me afraid, scared, even some who have gardens. They said they've seen their vegetables wither, and they're afraid to even touch it or even plant again because they don't know what the soil is like. So do you have any information in regards to that, or who can possibly test their soil to make sure it's not toxic or something of that nature?
Right. I do not have any information as far as any long-term effects. We have not been given any of that type of information. But you know, if anyone has any question about their soil, even at any point, I know that there are resources that they can use through our county extension office, through any of those resources here within our county that can certainly direct them in that path to get their soil tested. But again, I would refer any of those people that may have some of those similar questions to go to that BioLab resources site. It was full, I pulled it up today, it's full of different links for different types of situations. So I think it could be something that they could benefit from.
And just to let the residents know, Representative Sharon Henderson actually put out an official letter from her office that if you've had any effects or anything, she wants you to reach out to her directly, because the state representatives are trying to assist with this as well. And my last question may be to Mr. Cooper or Mr. Chairman. Do we have a soil and water person like Rockdale has that tests the soil and the water?
We don't have a designate per se.
Okay. So that may be something we possibly need to look at in the future that can assist our residents. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We're only a couple minutes away from zoning, so I'm going to hit some more of Chairman's report before we go into any other. In the spirit of one Newton, I want to talk about Tuesday after the BioLab fire. I was here at the courthouse. It was hard to be here that day. City of Covington got hit pretty hard that morning. And watching social media and seeing different reports going all around. At that time, I texted the city mayor and the school superintendent, and I asked them, hey, could we have a quick meeting? And within 15 minutes, 20 people showed up. And like I said, in the spirit of one Newton, we all worked together. We had the City of Covington, Porter Dale, EMA, oh gosh, Newton Water and Sewer, I think the Chamber as well. And we were able to work together to collaborate, to have one statement and one resource that citizens could find information about the BioLab fire. So being able to pull it all together real quickly, just, like I said, signifies that one Newton. one Newton. As we move into the, it's 7:30, and we're gonna move into our zoning. Before we move into the zoning portion of tonight's meeting, I would like to recuse myself from Appeal APP 24-00002. I was involved in the attempt to purchase this property at the same time as the current owner, which creates a potential conflict of interest. To avoid any appearance of bias, I will not be presiding over this case, and will step aside for this portion of the discussion. I would like to ask Vice Chairman Edwards to please step in for this portion of the meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So with that, we'll open up the zoning portion of our meeting. Ms. Applewhite?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. Our first petition this evening. This is old business. It was tabled back in August. It is APP 24-00002. The name of the appeal applicant was Thomason Hutton. The original case number was PP 23-00005. The original applicant was also that property, was also Thomason Hutton, and our property owner is Shane Douglas. The rep today would be Simon North. The property is located on Brown Bridge Road, tax ID 0013-144, and they are proposing a mixed-use development of residential and commercial. The existing zoning is R2, single-family residential, but it is in the Salem Overlay Tier 3, in the Yellow River watershed, and in the established suburban core character area. The proposed density is 6.98 dwelling units per acre. Total lot size is 15.33 acres, and 107 lots or units that they are proposing for the residential. And this is located in District 2. And again, this appeal came before the Board of Commissioners, because it was originally denied at the planning commission meeting. And the original request was for the mixed-use development. And we just have a brief history. This was heard in January before the PC, where it was denied. There was no opposition at the time at the planning commission meeting. However, the planning commission board did express concern for the potential additional traffic that this subdivision could bring. And just the history continues. So March 19th, the BOC first tabled this petition at staff's request so that the traffic study could be completed. And then on 5/21, and on 7/2, those BOC meetings were canceled for various reasons. And then on 8/6, the petition was once again tabled so that the community meeting can be held. The community meeting was held on September 16th. We had a good turnout. It was a healthy discussion, approximately 17 to 20 residents who attended. At this meeting, the developer explained their position, described what they were proposing, 107 townhomes and a commercial component. Average square foot, on average, 1350 square feet, which they felt would be an affordable landmark. And, you know, they expressed an interest in meeting the community needs for, you know, various types of housing. The residents stated that their concerns were in traffic and that the development would bring. They also expressed concern about the effect on infrastructure, and the fact that they believe more people wanted to live in 3-2 homes for families or single-family homes. This is the character area, I won't go through it, but it covers two character areas. You have the established suburban core, which allows mixed-use development, even in a single-family zoning, because it is in the overlay tier 3, that allows it to have mixed use in the townhomes. And of course, the live-work corridor is the same thing. It allows mixed-use development, and the zoning is appropriate. And just a brief recap, I'm just gonna recap briefly the preliminary plat analysis that was presented to the board. It was a mixed-use development. Of course, it was approved, it was reviewed for approval by staff, transportation department, fire marshal, of course, planning and zoning and stormwater. The water authority also issued approval for the location of the development, because they're gonna be on water and sewer. And the plat is out in 15 acres, 107 townhomes, 84 would be rear-loading, and 23 would be front-loaded. And the 3.22 acres would be the commercial space, which would be fronting or right adjacent to Brown Bridge Road. And again, you have their proposed house sizes that they're looking at as well. And I'm trying not to go through everything again, because we've been before the board quite a few times with this. But just to sum it up, it is in line with the vision with the comprehensive plan in reference to the character areas that are located there. It shows that it is compatible for the mixed-use development. And staffs have an opinion that the proposed preliminary plat, which lies in the Salem Overlay Tier 3, it does meet the requirements for the unified development ordinance. And if this appeal or this plat is approved, it is still conceptual in nature until a final plat is approved. So we have comments from staff, planning and zoning, of course, we reviewed it for compliance with the UDO, with it being in Tier 3, even with the R2 zoning. But because it's in the Salem Overlay, it allows for the mixed use. The fire marshal, the stormwater manager, the water authority all gave approvals. And when the traffic study was submitted, again, it was reviewed by the transportation department, and they have approved what was submitted in the traffic study as appropriate. And these are just a summary of the traffic study. So we have the AM peak hours, and they do it for townhomes for the retail. So the total new trips we're having is 82. And for the PM peak hours, it's just the peak hour, 136. And within the 24 hours, our total trips are 1,518. And again, the planning commission, they expressed concern for any increase in traffic or density along the Salem corridor. And of course, at the time, they asked if any community meetings were done, and we have completed that at this time. This is an aerial view of where it's located. So we have the Walmart and all its out parcels, we have the Zacks, the Wendy's, and so on. This is the parcel here that we're looking at. Current zoning, R2, but it's in the Salem Overlay Tier 3, which allows the mixed-use development. This is the proposed plat that was submitted, showing the breakdown. We've got the townhomes in the rear, and the front parcels will be for commercial development. And this is just a rendering or concept of the plat that they are proposing. These are renderings of what the townhomes will look like. So these are the rear entry townhomes, means the garages are in the rear. And these would be the ones that are front-loading. And these are examples of what they plan to put down there. And if there are any questions for staff, if not, this is a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Applewhite. At this time, we'll open up this hearing for those who want to speak in favor of this application or this appeal. You have 10 minutes to do so. Those who want to speak in favor, you have 10 minutes to do so. Please state your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
My name is Deborah Pittman, and I live at 185 Buck Creek Drive, Covington, Georgia, 30016. I'm in approval for this development because I live directly behind them, and I have been in my subdivision for 30 years. And the 30 years that I have been there in that subdivision, I have had nothing but septic tank problem. And with this subdivision, with this project coming right there in front of it, it will be behind me. With this project coming there, it will allow me to be able to hook into the county sewage septic system, and that will alleviate my problem that I'm having. I have had several floods. I done had land, I done had sewage line repaired in my home. I have had, every two years, I have to have my septic tank pump. So I'm constantly having septic tank problem, that my whole subdivision is, which that subdivision and Buck Creek subdivision was allowed to be built on underground water spring that was back there. And over the years that I've been there, I have spent so much money just trying to, you know, keep my house from flooding. This January, I had six floods in a two to three weeks' time period. January was raining real heavy this year. And I can tell you, from January the 12th all the way up until February the 20th, during that time period, I was getting flooded in my home. And it was hard for me to even keep up with it. I had my septic tank system pumped again, which it still did not alleviate, because it was so much rain and the water, the ground is saturated. So with this project coming there, I'm in favor for it, because it will allow me to hook into their sewage system, which they had, you know, said, you know, that we will be able to do that. So I have several of my neighbors that also signed paper and I bought with me, stating that they also would like to, that they are also in favor of this proposal going there to Grand Reserve on Brown Bridge. I think it would be a wonderful idea, just for the people that live there and it's surrounding. It's not only my community, it's a community that's gonna sit adjacent to that community right there off of Brown Bridge. They also have the same problem that I'm having, septic tank problem. So with that project going there, and we'll be able to, you know, hook into the sewage system, I'm in approval for that.
Well, thank you. Would you like to put, give, hand that petition over for the record? Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of this appeal? You have 7 minutes and 29 seconds. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Crystal North. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm pleased to stand before you once again to discuss our project, which has seen significant progress since our last meeting. As you know, we were granted 60-day period to engage with the local community, and I'm happy to report that our community meeting on Monday, September 16th, was a success. Commissioners Damon Mason and Alana Saunders were present, and their support, along with the positive reception from the community, has strengthened our commitment to Newton County. During the community meeting, we addressed many of the questions and concerns raised by residents. It was actually closer to 40 attendees. We just didn't have everybody, not everyone signed in. Their input was invaluable, and we believe that the design and clarifications we made demonstrate our intent to work in harmony with local interests. Residents expressed enthusiasm for the project and appreciated the planning efforts, as well as the community-oriented approach that we're taking. To reiterate, our project continues to adhere to the guidelines and ordinances set forth by the county, including those outlined in the comprehensive plan Salem Road Overlay District. Our design remains consistent with the county's long-term vision, specifically targeting the development areas of the established suburban core Village Center live-work corridor. We've taken several steps to ensure that the infrastructure improvements we provide, such as sewage upgrades, just like you heard Mrs. Pittman say, we are going to allow easements from the surrounding neighbors. Will benefit not only our development, but also the surrounding neighbors who have long dealt with the issues like septic problems. The community has shown strong support for these enhancements. Furthermore, our outreach to local businesses, including medical, Walmart Publix, and other local commercial establishments, continues to yield positive feedback. These businesses recognize the value of the development and enhancing the area's commercial offerings as well. Our project's footprint remains considerate, balancing the need of the community while promoting growth in line with local needs. We are mindful of the planning concerns raised in our previous meetings and have addressed them thoroughly. Our traffic study data, which was prepared, and thank you, Sheena, for addressing that last meeting, it was noted incorrectly, and you corrected that. I appreciate that. Thank you. The two entrances dedicated turn lanes and ACEL/DCL lane will ease traffic flow in and out of the development. Additionally, our plans align with the ongoing efforts of the county, particularly the overhaul of Brown Bridge Road, which will further support efficient traffic management. Additionally, the data presented on screen was corrected, so we appreciate that. I would also like to highlight that this process of community engagement has opened new possibilities for us to assist Newton County in addressing broader needs. We spoke to many of the community people, including people on the board, and we will be assisting with other projects as well, because there's a need here, and it's more than just the residential mixed-use development. Through these interactions, we heard directly from the county about the desires for additional resources and services, and this has led to discussions about bringing further initiatives to the county. One of the most exciting opportunities being establishing charter schools in the area, which could provide a significant educational benefit for the local families. Alongside the charter schools, we're exploring other projects and programs that would further enhance the quality of life in the county. We are not seeking any rezoning, as that was mentioned. This parcel is already appropriately zoned for the development we propose. Our focus is on delivering a project that not only meets but exceeds the county's guidelines while providing tangible benefits to both the community and local businesses. So we're here today to seek plat approval, this is simply the plat approval, from the Board of Commissioners to continue our collaboration with all stakeholders. We are confident that this development will be a positive addition to the area, bringing new opportunities and addressing longstanding community needs. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions and save the remainder of my time for any necessary rebuttals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this appeal? State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Denise Williams. I'm a Newton County resident. I would just want to put on record that I attended that meeting also, and the young lady that came up and spoke first, I just want to add one thing that she forgot to say. She mentioned in the meeting that night that she has used her insurance multiple times for the septic and flooding, and that she can no longer file any more claims on her insurance. So I just want to put that on the record.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of this appeal? That portion of our meeting is closed. We'll now move to the portion of the meeting where anyone who wants to speak in opposition to this appeal, you have 10 minutes to do so.
Dave Norton of New Bern. It's gonna sound like I'm against all growth. I had me a little speech planned. The first lady that got up mentioned that her and several others were in favor of this. I believe in the past year and a half that I've been here, that's probably the first time I've heard a citizen get up and speak in favor of something. And so I'm gonna say a few things. I hope that, I hope that if this comes to petition, that it does happen. I surely hope it does solve your problems, because a home should be a place, a house should be a place that is a home where you make good memories, not bad ones. It was mentioned a comprehensive plan. An attorney with the JDA stated that a comprehensive plan has no legal teeth, that it is just a plan. They set a precedent that it can and will be ignored. Why, so why do we have a comprehensive plan? Because the state says we have to, but the state law does not say we have to consider it. This is 117, 107 units on 15 and 1/3 acres. High density does not save green space, as they require more storage units because there's nowhere to put their stuff. So you see, that's why you see all these big storage places going up in Gwinnett County and around, where they have the high density. They require more gas stations. They require more grocery stores. They require more Taco Bells and a play on what is and isn't allowed in our codes is, they require more vape stores, more massage parlors, and more tattoo shops versus what this is 107 on 15 acres versus if you had two acre minimum, that would be seven families. So they will require more all of that. But I truly do hope that this solves your problems, and I'm not against all growth. If the citizens want something, and they come up here and say they want it, I would be more than happy to sit down and shut up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak in opposition to this appeal?
Kim Young, Crow Road. I don't have an, I don't object to the building. I object to all these townhouses. Um, I don't, I mean, I live down off Crow Road, but the subdivision next to it is single-family detached homes. If they wanna put something similar to what they're budding up to, you know, I wouldn't have any problem with it. This is gonna end up looking like that mess that's down Salem Road, right, as you get into Rockdale. I mean, it's just a bunch of, they're not cookie cutter, but that's kinda what they remind you of. And, I mean, I just think stay in with what's already there. No, you're not gonna get a hundred and seven homes on fifteen acres. But, you know, and then I just can't see going down Brown Bridge and you throw in a, a convenience store right there where you're budding up to a neighborhood. And I understand that they're zoned that way. But if we kept kinda in compliance, cause they're stuffed in between, there's a house on the other side of it. A single-family home. So you're sticking this in between a single-family home and a single-family home subdivision. I just, I don't know, I have a problem with the townhouses. I think they start making our community look kinda cheap. Um, and not what Newton County was, the way it was when I moved here forty years ago. You know, so I'm, I'm just kinda disappointed that we've gone this way. The sewer, I agree with, you know, it would be nice. I would love for my house to be attached to the sewer. You know, we all would. Um, but I don't think this is the answer.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak in opposition to this appeal? You have six minutes and eight seconds to do so. That portion of our meeting is closed, Ms. Appelwhite, and I believe this is District Two, Commissioner Mason.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may. I'm so sorry, Commissioner Mason. Um, I do want to read in, in your staff reports on page five. I'd like to read the recommendations into the record. Somehow that slide did not make it onto the PowerPoint, but, um, so we do have recommend, before the board makes any kind of a determination, um, we do have our recommended conditions from staff. I'm just gonna go ahead and repeat them. Um, the development will have two entrances and will include left turn lanes and a decel lane as approved by the Transportation Department. The development will be mixed use with a commercial component adjacent to Brown Bridge Road and a residential component consisting of townhomes. The mixed-use development shall conform to all applicable requirements of the Salem Overlay. And prior to obtaining a land disturbance permit, all comments from the Newton County Fire Marshal, Development Services Department and Transportation Department shall be addressed. And prior to obtaining a land disturbance permit, all concerns from external agencies such as the Water Authority, GDOT, um, GSWCC shall be addressed as applicable. And those are on page five of your staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, uh, Sheena. Thank you, um, for those who spoke in regards to this particular case. Uh, and thank Ms. North as well, um, for your presentation. Um, I did have a couple of questions, um, before I actually make, um, my motion. Uh, we talked about the traffic study. I know that was a concern at the town hall, uh, and I know you pointed that out. So just for clarity purposes, uh, the traffic study basically stated that it would not put any additional congestion, uh, in this particular area with this particular project. Is that correct?
I would say that, um, I would prefer the Transportation Director to answer, but what the traffic study tells us is that the development, it fits, it's appropriate for that location. In terms of the mechanics of it, um, I know one, the, um, resident was asking how they actually do the traffic study and all of that. Um, those are technical questions probably for the Transportation Engineer. But, uh, his approval indicated that it, um, the results that they gathered means that the, the development fits. There's appropriate for that location at this time.
Okay, so the traf, our Transportation Director basically reviewed this report, or reviewed this project and basically stated, um, that he was in approval of it because it fits um, with this particular land usage.
Yes, the traffic would generate, it's, it's appropriate at this time.
Okay. Um, the next question I have, um, I wanted to thank Ms. Pittman for coming up because I was gonna bring that up as well in regards to, uh, the sewer, uh, solution, uh, should I call it, um, for the Buck Creek area. Um, uh, and thank you, Ms. Pittman, for bringing, uh, the names of those additional individuals within the Buck Creek area that would be able to, um, tie into the sewer system, uh, of this particular project. Uh, I know we had the conversation with, uh, Mr. and Ms. North in regards to that as well. They're definitely willing to make that investment, uh, in this project and into the Buck Creek community, which I think will be a great enhancement for them to solve, uh, some of their, um, septic tank issues that they're having as well. Um, also, this was something I know that we talked about at the resident town hall. The, and I, and I don't know if, um, Mr. and Ms. North can address this, the additional land for recreation. I know you all were talking about if there were any additional land around this particular area because recreation is gonna be important, uh, in this area. So I don't know if that has been located as of yet. Is that a part of the plans? Do we have that as of yet? Okay, so they're still working on.
And that would technically have to be a separate project.
Okay.
It could be contingent on the term of this particular project.
Okay, okay. So I know that was just something we talked about, so I did wanna bring that up as well. Um, can we, we add, we posed this question as well, why a hundred and seven? Um, so I wanna just, you know, put it out there. I know some residents were saying, well, could we do less than a hundred and seven? Does it have to be, can it be seventy? Could it be eighty? Uh, why does it have to be a hundred and seven? So I know Ms. North answered that question at the town hall. So it may be a great idea to be able to have that question answered as well so that everybody can hear why that one hundred and seven number, um, was still there. So I don't know if we can have Ms. North answer that question.
Hello. So the reason why there's a hundred and seven is due to the density. It's in the overlay, so that means that you're allowed to put up to so many there. As you heard previously, um, Mr. Lanier, who was actually speaking with the property owner previous to us, depending on the density, it determines the price point per acre. So most of the homes in which they're referring to, you might pay forty, fifty thousand dollars for an acre. Where it's mixed use, the value goes up tremendously. So the value for this is based on the homes that will fit there. So that's priced per home. And that's how it works for the developers and what they'd pay. And the truth is, is this is, I mean, I'm not, I don't know if it's open record, but this is a very expensive price per acre would never fit to put single-family homes, nor is it zoned for that. That would actually have to be rezoned to do single families. That's how we got to a hundred and seven. It's based on the density.
And if it was less than that, would that increase the price point per unit?
Sorry, what was that?
Like if, if you decrease the, less than a hundred and seven, would that increase the price point for?
Well, the thing is, is you could put higher-priced homes, right? But that's not what the community wants. I mean, three hundred thousand dollars is where we're at, the lower end. And that's what's affordable for the area. That's why we're doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I know there was some mention, uh, in regards to, um, the single-family detached. Um, and I think there was some reference to Bailey Glen, which is near there. Uh, Bailey Glen does have, just for clarity purposes, um, they do have single-family homes. They had a first phase and a second phase. Um, in that second phase, they do have townhomes as well. Um, so there are basically townhomes in the area presently. Uh, not at this particular area, but, or price point as far as, uh, aesthetics, but they do have them there as well. I did have one more question. I'm sorry, I should've asked that while Ms. North, and this will be my last question. Um, we talked about, uh, doing our best to, um, try to limit rentals, um, out of these. And so is there a possibility that we can put, um, that we have a homeowners association that can actually put it in the covenant, the limit amount of rentals? Is, are, are you all willing to do that?
Yes, yes. That was actually spoken about in the community town hall meeting, um, where they want a cap on how many will be rentals. They're gonna be for sale, is the truth, but the HOA, we could put something in the covenant. That's not an issue. And just let me reiterate quickly, we're actually only doing half of what we're allowed to do. Technically speaking, we could do twelve and we're not, twelve per acre and we're just doing the seven, just for clarity.
Thank you. That was all the questions I had. Um, I guess with that being said, um,
Hold on, hold on, Ms. Mason. Uh, Mr. Sanders.
He answered my question. I was wondering about, was it gonna be rentals?
Okay. Now, now we can entertain a motion.
Okay, thank you. Um, I move that we approve Appeal APP two four dash zero 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 two with staff recommendations.
I have a motion on the floor to approve. You'll have a second. I have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Ms. Sanders.
My, my second is in regards to the approval of the, well, not approval, but the addition to the septic. And I wanna apologize to the residents because when we first did our OPA worksheet, it had the septic on it. The OPA funds could have been utilized for turning septic to sewage. And we did not approve that. And so those dollars we could have used to help those residents who are on septic to get them on sewage. So I'm gonna apologize to you that, you all who are experiencing that, that did not occur. And that's all.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That appeal is approved four zero. Next item up under new business, this is another appeal, APP two four dash zero 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 six.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman. Our second case number, um, as the chairman just repeated, is APP twenty-four dash zero 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 six. Name of the appeal applicant is Brian Arnold from GSP Hospitality LLC. The original case number was a special exception, OSPC twenty-four dash zero 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 one. And that applicant was Todd Jackson also from GSP Hospitality. The property owner is Oasis of Salem Road LLC and the property address is forty-two seventy-one Salem Road. The tax ID is zero zero one three, one two three, and the proposed use is for a drive-through restaurant. The existing zoning is general commercial in the Salem Overlay Tier Three Town Center. It's in the Yellow River, uh, sorry, the South River Watershed and in the live-work card area. And the total acreage is one point two five acres. And the appeal request today is to appeal the Planning Commission's decision to deny relief from requirements for the Salem Overlay for an outdoor speaker setback location of a hundred and seventy-five feet. The original request was to reduce the outdoor speaker distance from a residential property by thirty percent from two hundred and fifty feet to a hundred and seventy-five feet. And the potential effects on the county, there are no negative effects anticipated on the county if this request is approved with recommendations. And just a brief history, on June twenty-fifth, the Planning Commission tabled the petition for sixty days. And on August twenty-seventh, the Planning Commission denied the request to reduce the distance for the outdoor speaker. And the applicable section, um, I won't read through the entire thing, but it is section four six zero zero five zero, which is general requirements for the Salem Overlay. And you'll see in part A here, it says, "Outdoor speakers shall be located at least two hundred and fifty feet from any residential district and meet the Newton County Noise Ordinance." And we do have our background. Again, the location of the property is on Salem Road. Um, it's currently an undeveloped parcel in a Tier Three Overlay. The applicant, um, is gonna place, is proposing to place a Burger King restaurant there. Currently, there is a car wash to the south of the property and the public shopping center to the north. And the residential property, uh, the speaker distance needs to be reduced for is further south of the car wash. And we do have comments from staff. Um, the drive-through speaker will be located on the south side of the restaurant, which is less than the required two hundred and fifty feet from the nearest residential property boundary to the south. And a special exception is for relief from this distance of the speaker to have it located at a hundred and seventy-five feet instead of two hundred and fifty feet. And the comments from the Planning Commission meeting, um, at the first meeting we had, there were no objections from residents. In regards to the speaker, the objections were for having a fast food restaurant located at this location on Salem Road. And of course, the concern was, um, additional traffic. However, the special exception is not for the location of the restaurant, but for the reduction in the distance of the speaker. And that was the purpose of going to the Planning Commission. Recommended conditions, the special exception request was denied by the Planning Commission to allow the outdoor speaker for a drive-through restaurant to be located less than two hundred and fifty feet from a residential property. Should the Board of Commissioners approve this appeal request, it should be conditional, subject to the following enumerated conditions. One, comply with the remaining requirements of the Salem Overlay. Two, prior to any permits being issued, approval from Development Services, the Fire Marshal and Transportation Engineers shall be obtained. And three, prior to any permits being issued, approval from external agencies such as the Water Authority, GDOT and the Georgia Soil and Water Commission, um, should be obtained as applicable. So this is the location we have here. We have the Walmart over here to the east. Um, this is the public shopping center. This is the undeveloped parcel we're looking at. And then we've got the car wash, um, to the south of it. The residential property is this large parcel here. So even though the boundary line is here, which is less than two hundred and fifty feet from where they're proposing to hold, to, um, have the speaker, the actual property, the house, is located all the way down here, which is way outside the two hundred and fifty feet. But ordinance is not specific on whether it's from the distance from the actual building or from the property boundary. And we have to err on the more severe side. And hence why we're here for a special exception. Our zoning map, we have our zoning here, general commercial. Salem Overlay Tier Three. This is the survey that was submitted. So this is the proposed restaurant. We have the car wash. And this is the residential property over here to the south. This is the concept site plan. They're, I'm showing you the, where the building's gonna be located. Um, your speakers are gonna be on this side of the building. And of course, the distance we're looking at is, you know, this distance here to the residential boundary. And this is just a close-up. These are concept elevations of what they're proposing the restaurant to look like. And of course, the building would have to meet all of the Salem Overlay aesthetics and requirements. So we've got the brick siding. And this is the rear elevation of the same building. Are there any questions for staff? If not, um, this is the public hearing, hearing chairman, and our applicant is here.
Okay. Any questions from the board? All right, seeing none. Um, the applicant and those in favor of this appeal are allowed ten minutes to address the board. In addition, ten minutes are allowed for those in opposition to the petition. This ten-minute allotment does not include a response to any of the questions raised by the Commissioners. State your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Brian Arnold. Uh, this is Todd Jackson. We're both, uh, from, uh, twenty-one hundred River Edge Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia. Uh, we're here representing, uh, GPS Hospitality tonight and speaking, um, with Commissioners, uh, in preparation for this meeting. Um, there are some concerns over, uh, previous meetings about who we were. Is, you know, is this a big, you know, just a Burger King coming from Miami that doesn't have any representation in Georgia? That's not the case. We're a local franchisee. We're based in Atlanta. Just also important to note that all the- Just also important to note that all the Burger Kings in Atlanta are not ours. Unfortunately, there was another franchisee year that passed away just about two years ago and his restaurants have been going through some problems of image and receivership. And so, that's getting worked out. But we're nearly one hundred percent current image. I think it's important to note that we invest in our people through scholarship dollars. We also do leadership training for the people in our restaurants. And we invest in our communities more importantly. So we work with the Atlanta Mission for Homelessness. And in fact, the next two days, we're gonna be there working. We've, we've purchased bikes for local police departments for bike patrol. And then we've also done art installations and other fun things for people. And then, we always get involved with the community where we work and live. GPS was awarded the Global Franchisee of the Year based on how we operate our business. So I think that all that is to say that you can expect us to be an involved quality member of the community. So the summary they ask, it was already kind of summarized here, but the appeal is to go from two fifty to one seventy-five. That's really only twenty-five yards, which really isn't a big ask. I will say that I understand the need for the kind of zoning requirement for speakers in relation to neighborhoods and residential. I totally get that. But what we have in our restaurants is digital technology. So it's more conversational-based, it's gonna be like people having conversation by their car. It's not like it used to be like an old loud bullhorn where you could hear it like, you know, five hundred feet away. It's very conversational, it's digital. So I don't really think that that's gonna be an issue. The history of how we got here, we were tabled really for no reason out of one meeting. But the second one, we were denied based on Burger King as a brand. And there was really comments coming out that we weren't healthy. And there were questions around just our food and how we were gonna maintain our restaurant. We do have healthy options, the Whopper is a clean sandwich. There's, if you wanted to Google that, you would see that the Whopper is a very clean sandwich. So, you know, we were, this, this parcel is zoned for legal use. You know, it was noted in the citizens' comments earlier. Quite frankly, the car wash is probably gonna make more noise than we are through the blowhorns and, and the noise of the air blowing. That's gonna be way noisier than we are. It's important, I think, to note that we have staff support. I think the report states that no harm or adverse impact to neighbors or the Salem Overlay. I think denial would hold us to a standard that would limit the parcel from its intended zoning use. The previous denial was based on Burger King is the brand and the brand wasn't the issue that was considered for the variance. It was, it seems, why we were denied, however. Previous concerns around traffic, there really isn't gonna be an increase to traffic because it's not a regional draw. It's, it's all people that are in the community already, it's just where they shop. I think the important thing to note about traffic is more curb cuts and appropriate movements on-site. And I think through the site plan, you'll know that, and notice that we have internal traffic movements that keep traffic off of the streets. So that's more important than the number of people that come there. So I think the plan recognizes that issue and, and regulates the traffic on-site. So strict application of the zoning regulation, the denial of appeal places us on an undue hardship onto the parcel and us. An approval, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, again, it's only twenty-five yards. The zoning of the parcel would enjoy the same rights as other businesses in the zoning area. And then granting of the variance will not interfere or be the cause of any unsafe conditions. Approval would not cause us any detriment, any detriment to the public good or impair the purpose or the intent of the zoning ordinance. And then the menu speaker, if approved, is consistent in harmony with surrounding uses. So it's there. And we're, quite frankly, have better technology with newer technologies. So I don't even think it's gonna be an issue. So in conclusion, we respectfully request the approval to move forward. And thank you for your time. And then I'd like to reserve time for questions.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna speak in favor of this appeal? Please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Eve Jossman, I live in two-two-two-nine Sydney Drive in Gainesville, Georgia. I developed the car wash originally, what, four years ago now? It was a tough development, just because we, it was very tough to work with the public shopping center, the developer there, they were very tough. And the worst case about it is, we had to have access to the sewer, talking about sewers today. And sewer was on their prop, the sewer was on their property. So in order to get this deal done and have access for, you know, with the drive connecting to their parking lot, we had to sign a covenant with them. And unfortunately, my inexperience, or whatever you wanna call it, the only thing that we could put there was a fast food restaurant. We've already tried to go to them for a bank, Mexican restaurant, tire shop, and they will not work with us, they're making it very, very unaffordable to, to do it there. Kinda holding us over a barrel. So at the end of the day, I hate to say this, but the site can only be a fast food restaurant within the covenants of mine and their agreement that it was zoned for a restaurant. I, I didn't think it would be a big, you know, a problem with all the restaurants around there. That's why I made that business decision to do that. Any questions?
Thank you. Anybody else wanna speak in favor of this appeal? Please state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes and eighteen seconds.
My name is Brian Fricks, one-thirty Cornice Trace, Covina, Georgia. I like to speak in favor because when I see something like this, what I see, especially in the high-density area, is jobs. I live off Alcovey Road with all the new restaurants there. Every day on my way home and back, I see people walking to work, heading to jobs. So when I see this, I see jobs, which if we're gonna be bringing in a hundred and seven new homes, we need places for these people to work, to go out and make a living. So I think, you know, healthy options, you choose what you eat. But as far as a restaurant, I see opportunity. You know, I would think with the speaker, and I've seen lots of configurations with different restaurants and all. I mean, could you move the speaker maybe to the other side of the building where people order there and then come around the building? You know, I think there's other options. But I think with the land, the way it's positioned, that there's not a lot other things that could go there that I think it would be a benefit to the community.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna speak in favor of this appeal? Seeing none, that portion of the meeting is closed. Anybody wanna speak in opposition to this appeal? You have ten minutes. Seeing none, that portion of our meeting is closed. Do we have questions from the board? District three.
Shayna, do you happen to know what the other restaurants that are in the area, the fast food restaurants? How many of them have speakers?
Yes, we have... So there's a, there's a Zaxby's, there's a Popeyes, Wendy's. A Zaxby's here, Popeyes, Wendy's. Oh, there's a gas station here. There's a McDonald's just over on, on this side to the north of Brown Bridge Road. This is a gas station, this is a Waffle House, I think, down here.
So, so all of them have speakers?
The fast food restaurants will.
Okay.
I believe the Wendy's does, the Popeyes, the Zaxby's, and the McDonald's, yes ma'am.
And is it the goal for this area to be a fast food restaurant area? And I'm, and I'm saying that from a fitness perspective and from residents that I, I've spoken with. I mean, I'm looking at this area and all I see is fast food. We have, it's not like the town center where we have the nice Jim and Nick's to sit down. Everything is just fast food, fast food, eventually will kill somebody, I'm just being honest. And so, I don't even patronize a lot of them, but probably the Chick-fil-A once in a while for the salad. But it seems like this area is starting to be congested with fast food restaurants, which is kinda going against, I know we're not talking about the location of the building that's already there, but I just would like for economic development or whomever is bringing the various businesses to include the residents, to see what they want. Cause they obviously, they talk to us and this is not what they have wanted. They gave us great when the Popeyes came there. So all we're doing is putting fast food in a certain area and it's not beneficial to the community. And this is not what they want. But of course, it's already here, nothing we can do about, we're talking about a speaker. But I just wanted to put that on record, cause I'm looking at one, two, three, four, five fast food restaurants and not one sit-down healthy restaurant. And I live in that community, I live about five minutes from this area. And so, although it may be District Two, it affects those that are in two, three, and some four, cause that's all on Brown Bridge. So we just have to think about the restaurants that we're bringing here and make sure it's beneficial for that community, because this is not beneficial.
Thank you. District two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna be clear that Commissioner Mason did not go out and ask this business to come to Newton County. So I just wanna be clear that that wasn't something that I personally requested or that the residents requested in that area. There has been talk or conversation about other options. I do want to state, we just recently approved some commercial that's gonna be a little ways down the street. I know there was some confusion behind that. But I think with that particular commercial, there is an opportunity where we could potentially bring in some additional eateries that I think will be diversified, should I say. And I'll leave that at that. I did wanna ask another question. When it comes to cleanliness and landscaping. I know that has been some concern centered around landscaping with the current retail, retailers in that area that, and I don't wanna put clarity out there, that I am currently working with those retailers to kinda help address that concern. So I've had conversations with the store manager at Walmart. I've had conversations with the store manager at CVS and Walgreens to kinda help address that concern as well. And I think they are receptive to the conversation and discussions that I've had. And so, I'm gonna continue to engage in those conversations to make sure this is the Salem overlay. It should look and have a specific aesthetics. And we wanna make sure that it is nice. So I do wanna ask, if I may, the developer, when it comes to cleanliness and landscaping, what is the actual long-term plan? If I may ask.
So every commercial development is required to submit a landscape plan as part of their land disturbance permit. And that has to be implemented prior to us closing the project out or them getting their COs. In terms of the maintenance, that would be code enforcement. You know, as we get complaints or as the code officers drive by to, and they see the property, you know, they will address that as needed. What we have been doing is, is any litter that is found in the right of way, we actually have to contact GDOT, cause it is a GDOT road. So Public Works wouldn't take care of that here. So that is how we combat those two issues.
Okay, cause I know there has been some recent matters in regards to the landscaping when it comes to Walmart. And so, I want the residents to know that I am currently working on that and addressing that concern as well, and I know that has been an issue. So we wanna make sure that all retailers in that area are in alignment with that. So code enforcement will basically be able to address that long-term maintenance concern or that will be the responsibility of the developer or that retailer that's there.
It would be the property owner's responsibility to maintain it and then code enforcement would be there to enforce, yeah, yes sir.
All right, thank you, I think that answers. If you'd like, if he, if he may, I think he may want, the applicant wanted to. Yes, you're absolutely fine, yes, you may.
So we take the landscaping very seriously. We've, we've gone through a number of landscape providers to do weekly maintenance because they don't meet our standards. So you're not gonna see trash and bushes, you're gonna see healthy bushes, you're gonna see fertilized bushes, weed trimmed. They pick up trash on a weekly basis, you're not gonna see ant mounds, they, they treat all of that. It's gonna be impeccable. So it's, again, we're part of the community, so we wanna be proud of, we wanna be proud of it and we want you to come and visit us, so.
Great, thank you. I, I, I think Chick-fil-A has set a standard in the area. And so, a lot of times, that is a standard that residents actually like to see consistent across the board. I think that was all that I had. So with that being said.
Let's make sure we have any other questions? Any other questions from the board? Yes, District Three.
Can you tell me what was the reason why the, I may have missed it, I apologize, that the board denied it, the, the planning commission board?
What was stated by that rep is that after listening to the residents, that is what made his decision in that direction. And their objections were for the restaurant being located there.
Any other questions from the board? This is in District Two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll add to that as well. I, I know a lot of times, this can be a complex situation when it comes to development. When there are landowners, and I'm just putting this out there for clarity purposes, when there are landowners, those landowners have an opportunity to actually sell their land to whom they would like to. It is challenging for this board to restrict, to say who those landowners can actually sell to. The only thing that this board has the authority to do is to set specific zoning in place. And based off of the zoning, you will have retailers that will look at land to say, hey, I would like to bring a specific business to this specific area. I'm gonna have, you know, from my understanding, have someone look at that land, see if this is feasible for my business. If it is, you know, we go through the process to actually bring that business to the community. And so, I know a lot of times, it is misconstrued that the residents or those that are there would like to have specific things. But it is up to those retailers that they wanna decide when they wanna come to a specific area. We do talk about our average household income, which is about seventy-five thousand dollars on an average right now. And so, sometimes I think, we think as residents, we want a five-star or we want this sit-down or we want this. But it is up to those specific sit-down restaurants, it is up to those specific commercial establishments to decide whether they want to come to our community based off of our average household income, based off of the rooftops here. And so, I wanted to provide a level of clarity to that as well, how economic development truly works when it comes to developing a community. So with that being said, I move to approve APP two four dash zero 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 six.
You got a motion, do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, just excuse me, would that would be with recommended conditions?
Yes, I'm sorry, with staff recommendations in regards to just the speaker issue only.
A motion, do we have a second? We got a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? That leaves in a tie, I will split the vote in favor. I will split the vote in favor. Motion passes three-two. Next item, item number three, is a resolution, R101524.
Thank you, Chairman. This is in reference to our moratorium. We had an emergency hearing on this about a month ago, and we are bringing it before the board again for the public hearing portion. It is Resolution 101524. It's a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia, extended through August nineteen, twenty-twenty-six, an existing moratorium on the acceptance or approval of new applications seeking, one, to rezon properties to any zoning category that authorizes residential uses; two, preliminary plat approval for any development that includes any residential use; and three, requests for temporary building permits for residential uses under Section 510640 of the Newton County Unified Development Ordinance. So I have discussed with legal, just expanding this moratorium just a little bit to cover some items that came up over the month or so that it was in effect. And we have the above findings that were set forth, which were the original ones. So the moratorium, it will go until August nineteen, twenty-twenty-six. And again, we have for, one, rezoning property to any zoning category that authorizes residential uses, excepting for county-initiated applications related to like an approved de-annexation. So if a parcel was to be de-annexed in the city and coming to the county, technically it would sit there without any zoning. So with the moratorium in place, it wasn't allowing us to actually rezon that parcel. So now, we're putting this exception, which would allow us to rezon any parcel that would come in to the county via the de-annexation process. So that's one of the changes that we are asking for. And the second one, it says, and further, excepting the rezoning of property associated with family conveyance lots, as provided in Section fourteen oh five dash zero one zero C of the zoning ordinance, and they will have to provide an affidavit. So the family conveyance lots are in a situation where a family member would like to convey a piece of their property to a family member, you know, a parent to a child, a grandparent to a grandchild, an uncle, and that kind of thing. They want to, they've got ten acres, and they want to give two acres to a close relative. And that is the conveyance process. Right now, even with the moratorium in place, they can still do that, but if it's in those large ag lots, like an A zoning, where the minimum lot size is ten acres, and they have to rezon to cut out like two acres, they won't be able to do that rezoning under the current moratorium. So we're asking for that exception just for the family conveyance lots. They can only do up to five lots anyway, so it's not like, they don't have to do a preliminary plat or anything for that. But, so this exception would allow just the rezoning just for that situation only. And the other two conditions stand would be for the temporary buildings. I don't know if there are any questions on those two exceptions we've added? I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions from the board? District Three?
Just for clarity, so you're asking for an exception in regards to smaller lots that are already zoned?
No, it would be lots, it would be if a family member wants to convey a parcel to a child, and if it calls for a rezoning, it may not always call for that. But if they're subdividing in, like say, the agricultural zoning, if you're wanting to subdivide that lot, your minimum lot size is ten acres. But if you're only giving two acres, the natural process would be to rezon that two acres in order to cut it out. Currently, they can't do that rezoning with the moratorium in place. So that's why we're asking for that exception.
Okay. And the other one you mentioned, what was the second one again?
De-annex properties. If we were to go through a de-annexation, and a parcel came from the city into the county, technically it sits there without a zoning, and that opens up, the developer can do anything with it at that point. We have to initiate a zoning for that property that comes into the county, and the moratorium wouldn't allow us to do that right now. So that would be the second exception.
Okay.
But everything else will stand in place. We still have the moratorium on preliminary plats, the temporary building permits, and any other rezoning to residential uses.
And how many applications you currently have in regards to the one you mentioned, the first one, in regards to the families transferring the property over to another family member?
We have one right now that came through.
So only one?
And they cannot move forward at this point. So that's why we're asking the board to consider making that exception, that exception in case others come through, because it's going to be, we have the moratorium for twenty-four months.
Where is that property located?
It was off of Mark's Road.
And did they provide what they trying to do with the property once it's transferred over to the family member?
Yes, they have to do an affidavit, which is notarized, saying that they're transferring it to this family member, and then it has to go into that family member's name.
No, I mean, what do they plan on doing with it, like building? Are they building a house?
It's for a home. I think it's for a parent to a child.
Okay.
Yes.
District One?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that particular incident, Shayna, is the one you and I have been discussing for the last couple of weeks, correct? And that, that actual parcel that's being given to a son, the son lives there and will remain there. So that, I hope that adds a little clarity to that. It was, it was a conveyance, I forget how big it was, but it was going to take the other piece of property from, from ag to...
They're looking to rezon it, either to rural estate or agricultural residential, one of those two zonings. So it'll still be agricultural, just with the smaller minimum lot size designation.
And I don't believe that was the intent of the moratorium, that's just my opinion, but I appreciate that exception. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? At this time, we'll open up the public portion of the meeting. Those that want to speak in favor of this resolution are allowed ten minutes to address the board. In addition, ten minutes are allocated for those in opposition of the petition. This ten-minute allotment does not include a response to any questions raised by the commissioners. Please state your name and address. You have ten minutes.
Dave Norton of Newborn. I seen several of you nod your heads when she mentioned what the de-annexation was, so I would like to commend Development Services or whoever is responsible for catching that. That's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak in favor of this resolution? Seeing none, that portion of the meeting is closed. Anybody want to speak in opposition to this resolution? Please step forward. Seeing none, that portion of our meeting is closed. Any other questions from the board, from Miss Applewhite? Now, we need a motion for R101524. District Two?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve R101524, is this, with stated exceptions.
You got a motion? We got a second? No further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes four-zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our hearings for today. And if I may, I would just like to let everyone present know that we, the final district meeting, which would be District Two, we haven't held as yet, will be at Oak Hill Elementary School on next Wednesday. And it is open, anyone can attend.
Thank you. Moving back. Yes, I'm sorry, we do have one more question.
Some of the residents in District Four, and I don't know if Commissioner Henderson, they asked to redo theirs, because that was a day of the storm, and nobody, it was like three people that showed up, so they asked to redo their, three or four? And so nobody came out, because that's when the storm, they had to take shelter. So they asked to have one redone. I heard that from some of the residents in Four.
Mr. Cooper?
I'm going to let Mr. Cooper address that.
Well, we do plan to have public meetings going forward at Turner Lake, where there will be recaps of all of this information.
But I think it would be best to allow those residents to have their time, as well, just like all the other districts, if you guys would allow that, just to be
We'll follow up with you, Commissioner Henderson, with that request.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Moving back into our regular portion of our meeting, next we'll have a public awareness presentation from Amanda Huggins, City of Covington. Thank you for hanging in here with us.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, and thank you for having us this evening. Excuse me, I have a little cold, so. I'm Regulatory Compliance Specialist Amanda Huggins, and we have our Gas Director, Mr. Mike Jewell here as well. We're with Covington Natural Gas, and we would like to take a brief moment just to share some information that you may or may not already be familiar with. We have a survey that we would really appreciate you guys filling out as part of our public awareness program. There's a QR code in the packet that we have for you, and also a paper copy of that survey. So you can, you can scan it now if you'd like, and fill it out during this brief presentation, or if you want to fill out the paper copy, we can take them up after the presentation, or if you want to give them to Ms. Susan, I can come by tomorrow and pick them up. So why are we here? The purpose of us coming tonight is to communicate relevant information to emergency responders and public officials regarding natural gas and natural gas safety in the City of Covington, Oxford, and portions of Newton and Walton Counties. Also, we have to meet federal and state regulations, which we have listed here, this in the code. We're required to collect surveys from our public officials every three years. This is a more condensed version of the PowerPoint, I believe, that Mr. Fazio sent you, but it covers all the information that you needed to know. So why, so natural gas applications, this kind of shows you the percentage of usage in different areas. As you can see, most of it is for electric power, as well as industrial and residential. So in a typical distribution system, the gas is delivered through the system via main lines that are typically made of steel or plastic, or polyethylene. These are typically two inches in diameter, and they're located only about two feet below the surface. And branching off the main lines or service lines that run to customers, meters, also made of steel or plastic. They're typically a half inch to a three-quarter inch in diameter, and buried only twelve to eighteen inches below the surface. The natural gas operators in our area receive natural gas from the Williams Transco Pipeline. It's commonly called the City Gate, and it measures the flow of gas from transmission pipeline operator to the local utility. The local utility usually reduces the operating pressure, and Williams Transco adds an odorant. As natural gas in its natural state is colorless, odorless, tasteless, compressible, and flammable, the odorant is called mercaptan, and typically smells like rotten eggs. The local utility will then transport the natural gas to the distribution pipes or mains to service their customers. This is a map of the Williams Transco Pipeline. It kind of starts down in the south and then goes up. The City of Covington Natural Gas Department provides natural gas services to the City of Covington, City of Oxford, and portions, again, of Newton and Walton County. This is a GIS map of our pipelines. We go as far north as just below Walnut Grove, as far south to the Stewart Community Area at Highway thirty-six and two-twelve, and as far east is New Bern. Okay, so pipelines are marked by above-ground signs to give notice to the public of the presence of a pipeline in the general area. Now, these signs do not mark pipelines, they only denote that a pipeline is in the area. So the product, the signs will also denote the product being carried in the pipeline, along with the company's name and a twenty-four-hour contact information. These are some other indicators of pipelines. We have pipeline right-ofaways, and then the regulator stations. So when identifying pipelines, we want to focus on damage prevention with this presentation. We have a short video to show you from Georgia 811.
Dad, look, I thought I lost coffee.
Well, I'm not lost exactly, but, hey, are you planting that tree? Wait, where are the flags? The paint? Didn't you contact 811?
I've dug here before, it's fine.
Contacting 811 to have all underground utilities marked is the law, and it protects us all. Here, let me borrow your cellphone.
Dogs don't use cellphones.
Humans shouldn't dig before contacting 811. I mean, woof.
Online or on the phone, contact 811 at least two business days before any digging project. Brought to you by Georgia 811.
Can I keep them?
Okay, so in short, Georgia 811 is an FCC, National N eleven number, and it's for homeowners and professional excavators to call before digging. 811 calls are directed to local one-call centers, and the affected utilities will then come out and mark underground lines for free. There's no charge. The campaign has helped to increase awareness among the public about the importance of having utility lines marked before digging. We can reduce damage to gas pipelines up to forty percent by educating everyone on the importance of dialing 811 before movement of any dirt. And just again, this helps with keeping people safe, preventing environmental damages, utility service interruptions, avoiding project delays, expensive repairs, and legal problems, because again, in Georgia, it is the state law to call before you dig, whether it's a mail post, a fence, a swimming pool, anything, plants, planting trees, it's just best to call before you dig, because of all the utility lines that are just below the surface. Now, sometimes, you know, the pipes leak, so there are different signs of a natural gas leak. You'll have this, mainly the three senses of smell, sight, and hearing. You'll smell rotten eggs, you'll see bubbles in wet or flooded areas, you'll see flames if a leak is ignited, you'll see dead or discolored vegetation in otherwise green areas, you'll see dirt or dust blowing from the ground, and you can hear hissing or blowing from the pipeline storage tank or your appliance inside. So if you've detected the signs of a leak have occurred, the public should take the following actions. You need to evacuate the premises area immediately to a safe distance. Do not light a match or lighter, do not start an engine, use a telephone, including your cellphone, switch an on/off light switch, or do anything that basically you don't want to create a spark. And then, once you're in a safe location, you can call 911 or the local gas company and report the leak. The City of Covington Gas, Natural Gas, we prefer if you call our customer service center. That number is seven-seven-zero-three-eight-five-two-thousand. Then you'll hit the prompt to report a gas leak. You can do that anytime, twenty-four hours, seven days a week, and that'll get someone dispatched immediately as a gas leak is considered an emergency situation. Twice a year, we send a mailer out with gas utility bills. If you're a customer of ours, and you recognize this, this is the front of the mailer, and then this is the back of the mailer. They go out in March and September. Please encourage your constituents to read these mailers, and to even post them on the refrigerators. It contains valuable information about gas lines and leaks, and what to do in case of an emergency. These mailers are in both Spanish and English. If you have any questions about anything we presented to you, you can contact our Gas Director, Mr. Jewell, Gas Systems Operations Manager, Mr. Rob Lee, or myself. Again, if you can please just fill out your surveys for us, that way we can meet our federal... and state mandated requirements for our Public Awareness Program. That'd be great. Thank you for your time and attention. If you have any questions, just let us know.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Thank you, and we'll get these surveys done for you.
Thank you so much.
Next, under the Chairman's Report, we have a proclamation recognized in the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Ms. Hemp?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Proclamation, Newton County recognizes October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas each year, too many Americans are touched by the pain and hardship caused by breast cancer, and whereas breast cancer is the second most common form of cancer found in women in the United States, and is leading ca, and is the leading cause of cancer death for women with one in eight women diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime, and whereas more than 2,790 men will likely be diagnosed with some form of breast cancer in 2024. But thanks to early detection and improved treatment options, deaths from breast cancer have decreased significantly in the last decade, and whereas many people have endured the heartbreak of losing someone to breast cancer, and it's the memories of those loved ones that drive us to find a cure. And whereas all women are encouraged to talk to their healthcare providers about mammograms and other methods of early detection, as well as their risk of developing breast cancer, and what can be done to reduce that risk. And whereas during the month of October, we remember those lost to this terrible disease and stand strong for those currently facing a breast cancer diagnosis, and we strengthen our resolve to do our part in supporting those affected. And whereas by raising awareness of breast cancer and supporting research, prevention, and early detection, we will move closer to eradicating this disease. Now therefore, I, Chairman Lanier Sims, along with the Newton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim on this first day of October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We urge all Newton County residents to spread awareness of this disease, provide support for the disease, especially to those affected by this illness, and educate others on its prevention and early detection. Newton County Board of Commissioners, Chairman Lanier Sims. Also Chair, I would also like to remind everyone that October is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month as well. We do have the Tower of the Admin Building illuminated in pink as well as purple in honoring those victims and survivors.
Thank you. Last item I got on the Chairman's Report, last Thursday, I was down in Athens at a ACCG event, and our own Commissioner Sanders received a specialty track certificate in citizen engagement. I just want to congratulate her on that achievement. County Managers' Report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members and residents of this community have come before you today with the County Managers' Report. I'll try my best not to be redundant as Director Patterson and Chairman Sims talked about Hurricane Helene and the BioLab catastrophe, but I do want to recap it from the County Managers' lens, and I also want to talk about our current water supply. We're going to talk about the people because the people did extraordinary work during these trying times. We worked in collaboration, not only locally here with various municipalities, but with other municipalities to ensure that we can assist not only with Hurricane Helene, but also assist Rockdale with the BioLab catastrophe. We didn't do this alone, as I stated. We didn't work in silos because working together works, and that's exactly what we did. Let's talk about our response to Hurricane Helene. Again, just to reiterate some of the things that Director Patterson, as well as Commissioner Sims stated earlier, it was a concerted team effort by not only our internal staff, but also supporting municipalities, City of Covington, so on and so forth. That was the EMA Command Center, and as you could see, it's not only just Newton County staff members there. We have City of Covington there, we have the Mayor of Portidale there, we have the Mayor of Covington there, working, trying to come up with comprehensive responses to deal with the catastrophes that was ahead of us. And that was taken on September 26th. We also had the City Manager of Oxford sitting there as well, along with City Manager of Portidale. Kudos again to our public safety staff, in addition to our EMA Department and the leadership that Director Patterson showed. Kudos to Chief Turner and his team with Fire Services, as well as Sheriff Brown and Newton County Sheriff's Office. Again, working together works. Aside from public safety, public works were diligent, vigilant, and consistent in their efforts as well. So I'd like to give a huge thank you to Chris Malcolm, Chester Clegg, Matt Childress, and their team for doing what they do, ensuring that the debris, the trees, and the roadways were as clear as they could be once we deemed the community safe. Again, this is just a snapshot of the Command Center, various entities, other departments in addition to public safety, where Animal Services, Facility Maintenance, our Public Information Office, Fleet, as I previously mentioned, Transportation, GIS, and Water Resources. We want to thank all of them for their efforts, and we truly, truly commend them for being our unsung heroes here in Newton County. In relationship to our response, September 29th, in relationship to BioLab, again, concerted effort amongst different entities, we received a call where it was mutual aid needed on our behalf. Our Fire Services offered their service by way of an engine and a truck to respond in that mutual aid capacity. And Newton County as a whole, we would like to think is grateful for our efforts, but also Rockdale County and neighboring counties. And again, Director Patterson kind of collaborating and getting all the right people in the room was key to us moving forward during these trying times. Now, we're going to talk about our current water supply, some of the requested information. I want to thank Commissioner Henderson for his concerns about safety as in relationship to our water. Just to recap how this all evolved, on May 7th, I addressed our water safety to ensure clarity during the presentation. We talked about the Williams Street facility and the decommission process of that. In terms of PFAS, that was the only facility that we knew of that had any small particles of PFAS. I think it was 1% or under 1% of the water supply. Since then, we've been doing testing and detected that there are few parts per trillion, which is equal to one second within 32 million years, and also equivalent of a fly flying full speed trying to run over an elephant. It's just not going to happen. Additional correspondence was provided to this board by way of memo. To summarize those reports, we hit begin testing. August 27th, we did a series of testing. The results came back negative. We just recently did an additional testing cycle Friday, October 11th, and we're waiting those results right now as we speak. Yesterday, we had our water, One Water Team Meeting. I want to commend our Water Resource Director, Mr. James Brown, who's present here tonight for facilitating that, and we looked at the 2075 water supply and the resource analysis report associated with that. Those individuals who were in attendance that night received a virtual, I mean, excuse me, an electronic copy of it, and they could view it on the NCWSA.us site. And also, there will be a follow-up meeting on Tuesday, October 22nd, to address these issues. Also, I want to share, Commissioner Sanders, you raised a question earlier about the soil. While we do not have a soil conservation as exclusively, we do have what we call shared governance and oversight over our Georgia Extension Services, and they have designees within their department that can do some testing. So if you provide the information of those residents within your district that have those concerns, we will try to go out and administer said testing. This concludes the County Managers' Report.
District 4, got a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question I have to you, County Manager Cooper, is that, is my understanding that we don't know how long, even if the PFAS has, Forever Chemical has kind of just even left our water system, how long it has been in our water? Is there any idea how long it had been in our water system? And for the ones who may want to acquire a test, there's a test that you can take, I think, because a test you can do to yourself somehow or another, where are those available so that people who may want to can take that particular test? Because there has been concerns in, this in town, and I think at one point, I've from sitting here listening, they said it was coming through Williams Street, and that's mostly, it's to supply water in the City of Covington. And so, and I remember Mike saying that the Town Hall Mina had on 162, at a good old church, he said that if you want to take a test, then it would be in the system then. So we're just trying to, at least some people are concerned about how much may be in our, in our system, and asked the same question, if it's all ran through, how long has, had it been in there when we first noticed it? And so, and where might the test, and I sound a little redundant, because the main question, where might we buy a test to test our, this blood and see how much PFAS, Forever Chemical, which is a carcinogen that we know causes cancer, and it was in our water, how much should I buy this? Thank you.
I'm going to yield to Mr. James Brown, and he'll come forth to speak specifically to that question.
Good evening. To specifically test for PFAS from the water in the bloodstream, you can do that, but you won't know exactly where it comes from because PFAS is in everything that we use on a daily basis. It's in the clothes that you wear, deodorant, perfume, lotion, it's in almost everything that we use on a daily basis. To answer your first question, how long is the water, it's in water at the Williams Street location, once it passes through, it's gone. So it's only a matter of a couple of days that the PFAS that's in the Williams Street facility has already been exposed.
If I may just follow up just a little bit, what you're saying, we only had it for a couple of days, and it then ran through the system, we threw it, but yet I think it's been about a month or three months ago, I think, when we were talking, you were sitting in for the County Manager, and I asked that question, and you said there was a, an amount, small amount of PFAS that may have been, this was in our water, and we were told that it would work its way through the system. So it's all through the system.
As of right now, the testing that we've been performing, we have zero PFAS in our system. Hence, our, once the initial testing came back and we identified that it was in the Williams Street location, we subsequently started to reduce the amount of hours that we actually run the facility to reduce the amount of gallons of water that was actually being pumped out. So like we spoke lately, the last time we spoke, 99.9, I think, 99.1% of the county's water comes from the Cornish Creek Facility. All we do from the Williams Street Facility is just turn the water off just to keep that permit active. We do not really treat water to actually put, put out water for consumption.
Okay, that's good. But just let me say, as an elected official, list, who was elected by the citizens in Covington, Spring Hill, and whatever, District 4 Cover, and when there's any kind of something that's going on, for example, where I was that night over there at R.R. Cozen, I was trying to see how many people was, was affected by the hurricane in our community, and I was naturally concerned about the PFAS that was reported in our water. I also was concerned about the ethylene oxide that we had a while back from BD Board or whatever the name of it. And I'm just going to say this, I'm, I'm not trying to hurt no things to nobody, but I think at the very least, for citizens in Newton County, and especially ones I love, were born and raised and live there, that if there's anything that may affect their health or whatever, and I think if, and if I knew, then I want to make sure that we will be set to the best of my ability as a commissioner. And so I'm hoping that, that we had been talking about it for a long time, close that plant down, that it may solve the PFAS, Forever Chemical in our water, and then make some kind of test, I don't know, available for the ones who might want to take it. Now, I know we say it's anything, but it's in our water too. It was in our water, or in our water. And I think we should give the people who may want to the right to go and test themselves if they choose to.
The protocol that we have taken to this date is to address those concerns. Once we identified that there was potential and it was confirmed that it was in the water, we took all measures to reduce and eliminate as much as we could. So we've initiated, because one thing is, in the water side, there's only three labs in the whole country that can actually test. Right now, we're currently spending about $2,500 per test, and we, that's not the problem, but having the ability by testing, the protocol that we have to do in order to test is very extensive. So the, our training staff, our laboratory staff has gone on to extensive training to actually collect a sample. As mentioned before, it's in a lot of things that we use on a daily basis, like deodorant, lotion. So those things that could potentially contaminate that sample, those individuals who go out and test that cannot wear that for 24 hours before they can go out and get those tests. So the protocols that we have come up with has been extensive to make sure when we go to test the Williams Street Facility, and even the Cornish Creek Facility, and the Lake Vona Reservoir, making sure that those tests that we actually are testing is as adequate and as true as possible.
And lastly, I just want to thank you, Mr. James, for your dedicated work that you have, that you have done over the years, that I know that I've been here since you've taken over and before, and we appreciate and we thank you too as well. And I'll just conclude this about a little bit of knowledge that I know about Forever Chemicals, and I'm going to make it, not make it too boring, but it's a problem that we've had in throughout the State of Georgia and throughout the United States. And I think it was, it's a problem that concerned the President, President Biden, who's going to be going out pretty soon, that they set aside some money for the test and possibly, if needed, some type of filter. And I'm pretty sure you know more about this than I do. And I think that's exactly what was intended, at least to make sure that the citizens of the United States, that we are safe with, with our water. We feel safe, and we know that it's safe. Thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you. Any other questions for County Manager? Thank you, sir. Item number eight, unfinished business. We have none to consider. Moving on to item number nine, consent agenda. Got a motion?
Second.
A second? Any discussion? Got District 3?
My only, I wouldn't say issue, concern with the consent agenda to that.
My only, I wouldn't say issue, concern with the consent agenda that the residents brought to my attention was the approval of the B O C regular meetings actually canceling the meetings. Is there explanation of why we're canceling so many meetings? Because that's been a concern of the residents.
So, you know, for my eight years sitting up here, it's typical that November, December are lighter months when it comes to county business. In our past, we've canceled those. But with that being said, within twenty-four hours, if there is county business that needs to be done, we can call a meeting.
Okay.
So that's no problem, if there is county business, we definitely will call a meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you. Commissioner Hines?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just want to just thank you for being knowledgeable, easy to talk with, concerned about the county problems and stuff that we face here in Newton County. Thank you. I mean, to me, that's refreshing. But it's one thing that I'm, I would like to, if any way possible, I've just been kind of in prayer and stuck on District three park. And I know that we are aware of it, and I think that, that we need to address it and do whatever we need to make sure that it happens this year. In fact, I thought about it, prayed about it, excuse me, and I was going to speak with Commissioner Sanders. If need to, maybe we can get all the results from District three and District four. We come up and maybe reserve a horseshoe and talk about what can we do as a community to ensure that the citizens of District three, just like all other districts, have a nice park. And I know personally, I won't shut up, Mr. Chairman, and I know personally how hard Commissioner Sanders have worked on that particular issue. And I just feel a little empty, but as you're coming to an end, and we're not having at least the groundwork for that park. So we need to do that, and we need to make that happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'll give a very, very brief update. In the last, and I'm not counting, but I think I've been here about forty days, maybe. And District four improvements and District three improvements have been something I've been working on during this time. So at the next board meeting, I hope to have some updates for the District three part. So, woo, that meeting is coming quick. We're going to, I'm going to try. I'm going to try to have an update at that November meeting. Sir, sir, I have the mic. Thank you. So at that meeting, I will address the board at that time, hopefully, with a plan of moving forward. Thank you. Did we, we had a motion, a second? All in favor? Motion passes four zero. Item number ten, new business, item for discussion, consideration, Cornish Creek, Mr. James Brown?
The six hundred thousand dollar increase to an already existing five-point-three million dollar contract that we have with Reeves Young, Brown and Caldwell and Arcadis for the expansion of the Cornish Creek facility. The six hundred thousand dollars is for additional testing. What we're trying to do is utilize some different and newer technologies to reduce the footprint of the water treatment plant, but also set up the community for emerging contaminants with this new technology that will remove it out ahead of schedule.
Got anything, Mr. Cooper?
And I'll just add that this funding source is through the ARPA Drinking Water Grant, the two-hundred-and-twelve million dollar grant that was awarded to Newton County, our Water and Sewerage Department, as well as the City of Covington. So the existing funds are there.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Need a motion?
Some.
Got a motion, do we have a second? Got a motion, a second, all in favor? Motion passes four zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, Newton County Fire Services requesting board approval for the North American Fire Equipment Company Inc. contract for fire service uniforms. Mr. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll be very brief. We're just seeking approval to move forward with the contract to hopefully lock in a price so that we don't have to rebid every year with the fluctuating and typically increasing cost in uniforms.
Any questions? District three?
More sort of question, just some information. I know we were at Naco, and we had some firefighters that were there, some supporters. We're talking about the new uniforms to help you all, I guess, going into the fire, cancer and so forth. Are these uniforms are?
These would actually be our regular station uniforms. They wouldn't necessarily be the P P E that you're speaking about, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? District four?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question I have is a little bit off. One of my constituents called me, you going, and you know from being on the board, and most of us know, people call you in the community, and she called me concerning the food that our firefighters at the stations have. And she was saying that, that they didn't have, they had to pay by their own food or cook or something. And so I'm hoping that at your leisure, if it's worth looking into, that we have a retreat of sorts sometime, at some point, that we can talk about stuff like that. And it's also my understanding that we may not have all the updated equipment for our firefighters. And to me, that is important too as well. And possibly it's something that we can, can look at and maybe discuss and do something. And I'm reaching out to the county manager and to our chairman too as well, and the board too, so we look at those things together, and maybe we can address them if there's a problem.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have a motion? Got a motion, we have a second? Second? All in favor? Motion passes four zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number twelve, alcohol license, first reading, B A R A R two-five-three-six, Inc. At twenty-five thirty-six Highway eighty-one, Covington, Georgia. That's in District two. First reading, T M H one oh seven two-four LLC DBA Shell Food Mart. That's at one oh seven two-four Eagle Drive, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one four. That's in District five. First reading, Circle K, forty-one seventy-five Salem Road, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six, in District two. And first reading, The Kroger Company, fifty-three forty-one Highway twenty South, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six, that's also in District two. Next, we have citizen comments. You have three minutes to address the board. Please state your name and address for the record.
Marie Million, Neely Manor. Okay, so first of all, I saw a soundbite on Facebook about economic development where Sarah Hall was saying that the average salary in Newton used to be thirty-three thousand and now it's seventy-eight. So I'd like to, I'd hope that eventually citizens could be involved with economic development in saying what we want. Because personally for me, I have a membership to Urban Air in Henry County. I have a membership to Six Flags. I don't remember what county that is, but it takes about an hour to get there. So basically, everything that I do is not in this county. Next thing, yesterday I went to Spring Hill Park, beautiful, love it. Want to see that for the Westside Youth Facility. In addition, I see like some updates that are there that I would think that would be good for our other parks too. For example, cameras, they were being installed yesterday. That automated gate that was approved by the board a while ago, that was really good. Next thing, I volunteered at an event at Turner Lake a few weeks ago. The refrigerator is not working, it was kind of moldy, so was the ice maker. So I think, you know, that needs to be looked at. And lastly, with the bio lab thing, I know that all of you had to work together with the other county. But this is where my issue lies. I live not far from district, from Conyers. The messaging was confusing. So I was kind of hoping that all of you could have provided more messaging to us in terms of like, do we stay home, what do we do? I can definitely smell the smoke, I can see it at times. So just in the future, I know that you guys have to work in coordination with police and, I mean, not police, sheriffs, you know, emergency services. But there needs to be better messaging when we're like that close because the smoke doesn't have a border. But that's about it. And thanks again for bringing up Westside Youth Facility. We definitely are excited to hear that progress is being made on that.
Thank you. Next. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Angela and Larry Marks, seventy-five Stewart Hollow Lane, Covington, Georgia. Okay, our complaint is, we got beautiful new streets, they paved our street. But when they came out to pave the street, they parked the trucks on our lawn, and they tow up the lawn, and they got a sprinkler system, and they towed a sprinkler system. But I went out and talked to the guy, and I asked him, and they had marked it and telling me that they was going to fix it. So I actually got all my paperwork, I mean, got, I took pictures, and our Home Association also filmed it. And I gave it to my husband, told him to take it, so.
Well, what happened, they pulled up on the, on our grass on the back, inside our fence. And like they told her they were going to fix it. I got in touch with everybody, they came out and looked, and they said they couldn't because they own ten feet back on our land. I don't have a problem with that, but I have a problem, if they had it in the front yard, it would really piss me off. I just have a problem with coming out, tearing up something, tell me you're going to fix it, then you don't fix it. That's what I have a problem with.
But I got pictures of what, where they parked the car. Oh, yeah, and they sent us a water bill of seven hundred and something dollars.
And normally it's twenty dollars. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I got the pictures. You can give it to Ms. Hamm, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Misty Glor, I live at one sixty Stewart Hollow Lane. I can back her up, our road looks like crap. I don't know who paved it, but it looks horrible. And then I don't know if I have the right to ask because of your voice.
Could you repeat your name again so she?
Misty Glor, G L O R E.
We don't need all the extras, we just ask for you to please repeat it so she can write it down.
That's fine, I said it twice, thank you. Are we allowed to have the M P I number for the second doctor listed in nine B? Because this doctor's M P I number is not listed on the website as an actual doctor. His wife is listed with her license number, but he is not. The doctor above that is. Is there any way to verify that this doctor has an M P I license number and is active? I don't get an answer?
Citizen comments?
Okay, well, this doctor should not be on here if this doctor does not have an M P I license number and you just approved for this doctor as a void appointment, and you appointed them without an L P I license. That is on you.
We probably got it, but once again, name and address for the record, please.
You don't know who I am yet? My name is David Norton, I live in Newborn. Concerning last night's water team meeting, I received the complete report late this afternoon, so I have not had time to research it completely. But I have yet to see a map mentioning possible new service areas not currently served with water or sewer. I'm also curious as to service outside of Newton County and areas inside of Newton County that are within social circle city limits. I am aware of the contract with Rivian for services, but what of the many ancillary businesses that will be required? Who will service them? At what point will outside areas take precedence over the needs of Newton County property taxpayers? Also, the new buzzword around appears to be stakeholders. That word was used in a presentation this evening. It is very prominent in our comp plan and in our U D O reweight. Now I see it in the water plan. In the water plan, I do not see a public input in the plan other than they will try to answer questions at next week's meetings. To all my fellow Newton Countyans, if you go to N C W S A and go to contact us, you can have a copy of that emailed to you and then ask your questions, and they will try to answer them next week. Also concerning our Industrial Development Authority, known as the Newton County Industrial Development Authority, why are we involved in a city limits of social circle at the location known as Stanton Grove? Is our own government entity looking to develop properties where they do not have to hear our concerns or follow our zoning laws? Will they be looking at other areas outside the county to make their mark, to avoid us? Who are the true stakeholders in this county? Also, and F Y I, I've had a few friends tell me this week that if Rivian gets their five-dollar billion, five-billion-dollar loan, they will be making their exit plans from Newton County. So you will not have a housing shortage, but your real estate agents will make a good profit. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's James Peterson, I live at seventy Crooked Creek Way, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six. There are two items I'd like to address. The communication over the bio lab needed to be improved. You told us in emails that our alerts, that it was safe for us to be out and about. But yet you closed down your offices for two days. Now that's to me sending a mixed message. Either it's safe for us to be out, or it's not. And if we're taking our leader from our government, which is the board, Mr. Sims, you admitted that you were out in this office working to try to resolve the problems that this bio hazard concerned. And then there was a meeting that was canceled, but I just found out tonight that it was re-up, Mr. Mason, you may want to put that on your website now. And the communication to the people in a crisis needs to be improved. The last thing I'd like to address is the roundabout on the Brown Bridge Road and Magnet Road. That's a brand-new roundabout, why is it so rough? Take a little drive around it before you issue the final payment and tell me why it has to be so rough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Brian Fricks, one thirty Cornish Trace, Covington, Georgia. Just wanted to speak about the J D A and how it's supposed to bring business. I understand it's supposed to bring business, but it seems like a lot of- But it seems like a lot of times the businesses that come in end up getting a lot of tax cuts. And so like Commissioner Henderson was saying, you know, it would be good if those businesses that came in actually help offset some of the taxes of the citizens of the community so that everybody benefits. Because they say they brought in $40 million, but I mean, hopefully she'll have it next meeting. She said she would try to bring something back, but if you're talking about bringing that much money into a community, it would be good to know how it's being spent, how it's being used. And then just about the new park, that's one of the things with all the meetings that were had before they came up with the new comprehensive plan. That was something I really talked a lot about, was bringing new parks and recreation to these communities. And I've heard a lot of good feedback about Spring Hill. I've talked to two different people. One guy, he's blind, lost his leg, but he was just out there with his two twin daughters having a park and just talking about how much they enjoyed having something like that available. So thank you guys for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Denise Bonite. I live at 140 Turrow Lane, Covington, Georgia. I just want to piggyback on some things that I've heard. Commissioner Sanders spoke as far as the fast food restaurants. We really need to put a cap on having the same restaurants come into our community. As one of the prior speakers just stated, I have a membership, for an example, at BJ's. BJ's is in Conyers, but I pay my taxes here in Newton County. I should not feel that I have to go out of my area where I pay my taxes to take the revenue there in other surrounding counties. We need restaurants that are here for the families, that we can sit down, we can have a decent meal. And we have to get out of that mindset that we have certain price points within our homes that we cannot have affordable, decent eateries. We should not just be having Burger King, McDonald's, KFC, those type of fast food joints to choose from. We need healthy alternatives. Secondly, I would like to speak on the water situation. As I've heard this Commissioner Henderson, I'm personally paying for a water purifying system within my home to make sure, because yes, the state of Georgia has a, I guess I would say a lack of a word, a poor water system as far as toxins. We've had two situations just here, less than 30 days. And we would like to know if the homeowners have our water been compromised. Yes, I have a filtration system, but a lot of folks don't. And it is not fair that, as Commissioner Henderson has stated, that we don't have some type of resources. If Conyers versus Rockdale caused this biotech situation, they should have resolutions as far as what the counties and the surrounding counties are going to do to bring some type of closure to this situation. I heard the representative from our water company say, well, we're spending X amount of dollars. Why are we? They caused and created the problem. Let them address it. Let them correct it. So, and then as far as Mr. Henderson said, as far as taxes, I'm hoping that Mr. Cooper, when this money is allocated, that it's allocated to water.
I'm sorry, your three minutes are up.
My three minutes are up?
Yes, ma'am.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner comments? District One?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to reiterate that City Covington, Newton County Water and Sew Authority and the Newton Water Resources, it was refreshing to attend the meeting last night and get to see the collaboration between those organizations and getting out front of our water needs and some of the projections that are out there. It was just nice to, it's nice to have the knowledge, just to know that, that, that those people are thinking out front of, trying to get ahead of the curve is what they called it. Also, I attended a, last evening, I attended a very well put together political forum by a first-class organization. It was a fraternity, and I'm gonna forget their name at the moment, but I want to apologize to them because I lied to them. I, I didn't hang around for the picture because I told them I had to get on a plane at 5:00 in the morning, right? Well, that was a lie because I thought yesterday was Tuesday and today was actually Wednesday. So when I got in my truck, my wife said, why didn't you hang around for the picture? I said, I gotta go home and pack. I gotta, I gotta be out, I gotta be out early in the morning. She goes, tomorrow's Tuesday. So I still had this meeting to go. I wanted to apologize, I don't think anybody's here, but I want to apologize to that organization for that just flat-out lie I told them last night. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. District Two? Thank you, sir. District Three?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank the volunteers who made the Fourth Annual Ladies Retreat a success. Without you, this would have not happened. Without you, I would not have been able to do this for four years. I also want to thank Chick-fil-A for providing the lunch. We had about 100 or so individuals. We did various activities from yoga to creating cosmetics to painting, flower arrangement, and thank all of those who provided those materials as well. So we had a good time. We line danced and did everything. So I want to thank you so much for that. We had a great time at the Fourth Annual. And I also want to thank Director Mask, because when we got there 8:00 that morning, Duane, Director Mask, was on the blower machine, I don't know what you call the machine, it's a machine that you ride and blow, okay? So he was on the machine blowing the leaves for us to make sure that the ladies didn't have to walk on leaves and so forth. He was there like 7:00 in the morning, probably earlier than that, because I got there at 8:00. So I want to thank you, Director Mask. I know you're not here, but I'm gonna put that on record. I really appreciate it. And also your Parks and Rec team for making sure that after the storm, that we were able to go out and have this event. So I really appreciate the extra mile that you took. And also I want to reiterate my Let's Learn series for those who've been actually on my website, commissioner sanders dot com. If you go to Let's Learn, I've actually created stories, free stories, stories in regards to our government, how our government operates. I've also broken down a lot of government documents from Project 2025 to our enabling legislation to our zoning. I broke it down in layman's terms. So you can actually go to the website, because I know a lot of you don't want to read those 400 and 500 pages. So it's been broken down for you to be able to understand it in layman's terms. So thank you so much.
Thank you. District Four?
I'll be brief, because I'm ready to go. I'm ready to go home. I'm going to bed when I go home. I like, I think the recreation, and I met the chairman and county manager Cooper, and we did some groundbreaking over at Turner Lake. And while I was there, I remember when we opened up Turner Lake, I've been around that long, people, and I'll never forget Mr. B.C. Crowe and how he mentored me. And I would talk about, we rather see a child, a young person, playing recreation, basketball, football, baseball, than to see him doing something bad in the streets. And so I'm hoping that some point, before I either get tired of my wife running up here, that we can work out something where we can make sure that all the kids, every kid who wants to, can play sports. Because I'd rather see them playing sports than in our detention centers. I'd rather see them playing sports than going to some store stealing. I'd rather see them playing sports than using a gun to kill another kid. And so I'm hoping that, because I love them, just as much as I love my own kids, that we could do whatever we need to do as a board to make sure that they're safe and they have fun and have a good childhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a need for executive session?
No, sir.
No need? Motion to adjourn? Got a second? All in favor? We are adjourned. Everybody have a good night.